...in your packet this week with a few items to update on. Last Friday, the chief as well as a couple representatives from the school district and Platte County Sheriff's Department, the SRR Sergeant interviewed two candidates for the SR position and have actually identified John Luke in height, did I pronounce it right?
Joe.
Joe, why do you say the height?
That's a Joe.
I know, I can't read nothing. He spent four years on the department and I can spell his name right now as well, the height, I can explain it. He very strong candidate, everyone was pleased with him and he will begin working with Officer Colonel trying to figure out scheduling to be able to start working in the firm and a chance definitely and then we'll work out how they'll address the schools with the two officers at this point. Several meetings, hospital, chamber, et cetera, the superintendent has been very complimentary and grateful to the board for your decision to from that position, so they're grateful for that. Chief did report this morning, we have had two more instances of vehicle break-ins, unlocked vehicles, not break-ins, they have just been stolen property or one actually there were two incidents earlier and one included theft of four firearms that were left in unlocked vehicle and one vehicle was stolen that was left unlocked. I reported on Friday that we had a gas line issue on Main just in front of the senior tower. We've had continuing issues today with the gas lines on Main Street. Both the gas line and interference with the water lines, we're looking with our department and fire and looking through those issues to address that, that's all part of the contract work but it's delaying some of the work as well. Last Thursday, a number of you were at Heritage Park when the mayor had his coffee there to get input on Heritage Park improvements and park board meetings on Thursday, we reviewed them, we've been doing some research to provide and give you our good feedback and good information, pretty well attended, it was beautiful and rapport. And then, I don't know, oh, sorry. Oliver Atkins had raised a question about the funds that we've had to spend on utilities through emergency purchases over the year in harmony scan and budget. We do budget for those emergency repairs and as we finalize the budget, we'll get information around, we'll certainly be able to pull up that information.
I'm just worried around these things.
Yeah.
About the heat.
About the heat, absolutely, we're in conversation through candidates and we know what we're doing, it's going through and we're fixing it in a way that 30 years ago they won't say what were they thinking.
So does that water line replacement hit utilities or hit streets?
That water line replacement right now will hit utilities because it's actually, it's right on the edge of streets, it will go over, but we are going to extend the line that it connects to is outside the project, but we'll go back to the connection and enlarge that line so we don't have to go back into that project, so we'll do it through utilities. And that's all I have.
Awesome. Next item is agenda number four, which I think you also have a couple times on.
Yeah, we do have, it's all outlined in the report here, but the concrete base really particularly there on Main Street, from bridge to commercial is lacking and as Jack has mentioned in several different instances, we really haven't come across the issue because there really is no utility work under there and utilities needing to be replaced, so it's survived pretty well, it just needs a lot more base there. We also included in the information, the contractor, or excuse me, HBR engineers looked at the full project and they think that's what the work base issue is, but we are also including that intersection of bridge and church because it's basically non-existent at this point as well, so we'll make sure we get a good base in there. So what that does, that total is 108,000. We had $303,000, some change remaining, so this would take our front balance in, or estimated front balance to about 195. Now that 303, that is with utilizing engineers' estimates for the WD and South Commercial engineering entrails, so that still leaves money for those funds. One other thing to keep in mind that we don't have here is any interest earnings that we might have through the course of the project, as we move through there, so 195, 625 is what we've got.
And so maybe somebody could make a motion on it.
We're going to approve the resolution 643.
Okay. So Val, Shubler, any discussion? All those who favor approving resolution 643, say aye.
Aye.
All those who say no, question carries. So Cindy wants to sign this, do it, is there time any and we are still planning to get asphalt down.
That is the plan. Cindy will sign it, we'll give information to the engineers and they will begin updating designs, actually I think most of those are actually in place, and then give information to our contractors to begin and as they do that payment work then they do anticipate commercial to at least bridge on Main finalized here in the coming weeks and depend upon how work goes here on Main between Mill and Bridge, we'll get that possibility as well. So yeah, we'll start with the asphalt. Do you follow the asphalt move when you see that?
Yes, right, absolutely, yeah, yeah, yep. We don't need that, that's the point, that's the point.
My honor, if I so soon.
Have that one here? Here. Next on the agenda is discussion, Mr. Horrocks is here. Fill out a card. Yeah, so go ahead and give you your three minutes to address the door and then we can kind of talk through this a little more. Jack told me to be more thorough, something to do the other day, remember that? Yeah, I asked Jack about that.
Handing out the easements to you guys last time, you all wrote those. Now those were all put forward when Mike Trey was here and Jack said that those weren't no good because Mike did not sign those. Those were signed, they were notarized by Judy, she was the boundary back then, I had to look at the city on that. So, probably wasn't, and they was all filed to the county.
It's filed with the easements.
By the city.
The easements.
And Jack told me that none of those were enforceable and my part of that was no good, there was a concession on that. And so another part of that is the part coming off that Trump line and coming across the creek, all that was changed because they hadn't moved that pipe. Because Archie could put that where he wanted to, instead of where we had said to put that back then. But you know that every, what I'm asking for is what was promised to me on this back then by Mike Trey, and none of that easement is any good, then anything that Mike did is no good. Because there's Kurt Langich, there's Mitch, there's Roger Rodicat, there was Terry Evans, there was Vanessa, there was, it probably go on and on through this whole building. And what we, we'd all agreed to was to help the city move forward and to grow and that property where it runs through there, it feeds all of those additions back in there. It's all this landing, it feeds diamond crest, there's three or four more back in there and one across the street remain, so it feeds all of those, all those sewers back in there. So, let's see. Now, I was here the other day that Jack and Cindy proposed to me that the mayor put forward that they trade all three, all of that for just a free sewer tap and water tap on this 169 property that I'm living right now, that I've approved, that it was an ice floor and cleaned it up, and that's what I'm trying to do on that piece of property right there. And I plan on using that for that, one of those tabs and one of the water tabs on that particular piece of property to move forward on that. But if none of this easement is any good, of course I'm going to have to pay for, I'm going to have to pay for the sewer tap on there so we can move forward and water water here for it, so we can move forward with this. And if I can't use it, I guess I end up having to pay paper on that instead of using the easement agreement that I thought I had, that I thought I had with Mike. We own it from Ice Law and I don't know where he is now, but Roger Rodicat, he told me that he'd come back up and I got a problem, I said, okay Roger, we'll just see what it is. And on that, that piece there to come across the creek, I've asked numerous times why I have to have that done, I would get a different answer, well, we want to go up the road and come down the road, we're tied to that, but we want to go someplace else and then we'll tie it to that. So now it's just come across the creek and do that, and it's supposed to extend 125 to pass the creek, that's what Roger had talked to Mike Trey about, it shows it on that now. One of the other things that, because none of these were, none of this sewer line was inspected when it was put in, it was just that one inspector back then, and so whoever was didn't, didn't make sure that it was put in where it was supposed to be, didn't make sure that it didn't get any encasements going across the creek, none of that was done by whoever the inspector was to make sure it was put in like that. So, that's, that was one, and it already, by not inspecting, it's already broke once long by property and spilled sewage over it in back field and I just called up and I reminded him when I talked to him, I said, you know, Art Stevens, he left a bunch of rock back there, big pile of rock, I said, he left that there, just kind of clean up the sewage back there and fix the pipe, let's get it done. He asked me, well, how can I come in, I said, well, come in through, through the four, she'll let you, if not then you can come through me and let's just get the sewer redone, take that, fix it back up. Very similar to the pipes. Is there, is there any questions that you guys got for me as far as, as far as anything? The one piece that I did last time that just showed where Rodicat was, it don't show the other 28 acres where it's in back field where it goes over into Vanessa and over where cuts north and goes to Robling's Landing. And that's, that's another, another part on going over Robling's Landing, the city doesn't even know that they've got a sewer line going across over there to Robling's Landing and they don't have any.
So one question I have, the tap you, you just made that you paid for, is that residential or commercial?
It's residential. It's the house just south of the ABC or the park, it's kind of about on 169.
None of them are for us.
We did this all just to move forward with the city, so the city can move forward, there's
no problem, no real arguments or anything, I don't know what Terry Evans did, you know, we got, we'll come back, we can come back, we'll have to keep for that reason that Mike did.
Yeah, and I don't think anyone's questioning easements, I think the question is the financial obligation to a future board, which, without having a, without having anything documented of cost, you can't bind a future board to an unknown amount of money, no, no order in there. There was never a notice passed by the city to commit to this financial obligation and easements were recorded, we've spent quite a bit of time with our attorneys in London, spent a lot of time with the county to make sure we had everything happening, so anything else you have?
I don't have anything else to say. Like you said, the two items we have, we have nothing in writing, we asked Mr. Horrocks several times for anything that he might have that would support that, I think the minutes reflect any action on, on any type of agreement. And John's review noted the inability of the ability to bind a future board because there's a known amount.
And Jack, it's $5,700 tap?
$5,200 sewer is what was planned out.
If you're going to combine.
Maybe that's 700.
700.
700 per unit.
Yep. And these are costs that wouldn't be the city, would not inflict on, onto the city, these are fees that I have to pay to the city.
But the fees have to still be charged in the way, correct?
Correct.
You can't just say, here's a check, come to the city and get a permit, it's, we have to document a dollar amount and that dollar amount has to be retrieved and brought forward.
And that's why we put it into the release that, or in some agreement that we have provided in the camp with Mr. Horrocks, a couple weeks ago outlines a specific amount of, or specific items and we felt kind of in a reasonable way to address the situation providing basically a credit to them. Or one one to one. And that day, earlier in that day, you had paid for one, and I wasn't, what did you pay for the water? You paid for the sewer tap and the water tap.
And the water tap.
And.
And that was, it was supposed to be all associated because with those taxes, is what, this is what's ranked up on the representing, the representing of the city, right? So, this, this has been 15 years ago, but I don't know if all of you end up here then or not, or if we all owe money 15 years on.
Trying to work through this, if, if you had, say, say, say you had all three, when might you use the other two? Because that, you know, part of what we're trying to get at is that binding future board, how do we do that, how do we, how do we work through it?
That, you know, build another house or do something on my property and want to, want to tap into it or, that's, that's what I'd want to do, or like the property next door, tap into it then, and same with that property, there's another water tap still down, sewer tap still on it. One of the things that they did, and did get honored, they got honored with Mitch, this easements, they, they got honored with Mitch and he got honored with Kurt Langich because Kurt has a, he had a water tap already and he still had a sewer tap to go on. And Mitch, by doing that agreement on that part of the property, it was paid by the city, the city paid for it, Jack said it was a miniscule amount, but Mitch did it and the city thanked the party, did any of that work?
When was that done?
That was done probably six years ago.
Six, seven, eight was when that happened.
Typically this venue, the authority of the city, the legislature, or the department events, they don't think would allow for this amount to be, so we have to research that also. And again, as you just mentioned, on this property you're asking for three, then on the Rodicat property you're asking for another one as well, right?
Because there's still one left on that.
That's another.
And Roger, Roger has come, voiced that in, he will, he will say. And it's been 15 years, you know, no, no, and I know it's all been there, there was no time expired on there, saying anything like that, you know, that was really new tape and so were Rogers and Kurt, so was Vanessa, you know, I don't know about Terry, because Terry didn't, Terry Evans, I don't know. What's that? All of them are up now through that whole, through that whole neighborhood here, all like five hundred streets.
So that, those costs, do we have, is that, is that something we have to pay or is that just something that?
We would wait, we would wait.
Can we just lose out on that? Would you, would you provide credit with this dollar amount? The board can approve a credit with a dollar amount as it stands today, you can't say that in the future it's an unknown dollar, right? If the sewer water taps go to $7,000 next year, that's what happens. We can only bind a board to a dollar amount, you can't say, well, in the future, I go, so maybe you can, you can, you can set for a dollar amount to go credit. Does that make sense?
That part makes sense, but there again, Jack, we gave up a property for this to happen for the city to move forward and make money off of this, and that's where our, there's sewer systems.
Our property.
I lost out, I lost out on property because they, he decided he could cut through anywhere he wanted to cut through and we didn't make him dig it back up, we didn't make Archie dig it back up and Vanessa didn't make him dig it back up, that would have cost the city, that would have cost 8,000s, thousands of dollars, probably 750, 800 thousand dollars or better, you see where the word is at, we're all this, we're paid for it, you know.
I think that's. I just wanted to clarify, there are two issues according to our attorney, one is the extension clause issue, that Stevens' secretary, both of them are the, the other one is the binding portion, because it has to be a certain number for that, so he has to give us something, we have to give something and then it can be binding, you can go.
And that's, that's what we.
So that's where, that's where the.
That's, that's the.
There are two different definitions associated.
That.
More or less accept or dead as far as property, for the board.
According to our attorney, in, in order for an agreement to be valid, both sides must give consideration, the city's consideration would be waiting at the end that fee, which would be as what's drafted in there, waiving all the extra stuff, all the extra, the six or whatever you have, five or whatever you have. So that, that would be your consideration in that, the city's would be waiving.
As far as putting the line, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying both sides have to give something valuable enough in the agreement, whatever it is, that's what.
And what the agreement outlines is waiving the fee for one sewer and one water tap for you, and you've, you've already been waiving one sewer tap. Water. Water.
Water tap is the way, you're saying way it says in that agreement that it's the city, the city water system.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
He says, he says the sewer is, of course, said sewer system.
So.
So we can, I told you it's said sewer system and it's said sewer system.
So we can't like hold future boards to a specific dollar amount, but can we issue credits now and then?
So what the proposed agreement, so what the proposed agreement that we drafted, the language on it is we will provide credit for a sewer and water tap under the conditions that those would be only taps that we will provide credit for, no additional taps. Right, you mean Jack, that's.
That's right, as Jack outlined, there were two taps that we had, what this outlines, whatever council directs us to do, we can look at, but what this outlines is one water and one sewer in exchange for him waiving the, his claim on the rest, on the remainder of that, our documentation and we don't have, we're documentation reaction on part of the board.
We have no ordinance, we have no ordinance, we have nothing to do with it for that or after.
And it's not just claiming you, it's the fact that we don't have, we don't have anything in writing to go back on.
It was just all filed and notarized by the city employees that worked for the city.
The easement was filed and notarized.
Easement, that was a whole, whole easement agreement.
The notarization that we have that's signed does not outline the numbers that were, that Jack, is there any other clarification on that?
No, I don't, those parameters that John laid out are the parameters that we're stuck with, it's the law, chapter 429 says, extension frauds has to be in writing in any fashion following a vote of the board.
So with, with the extension fraud, are you saying either the city frauded me or I frauded the city, is that what you're?
No.
We're protecting, it's just a title, we're protecting everyone's interests.
So the easements that were recorded contains the following language, in consideration for any of these, granted, should be allowed to make free residential connections to set sewer regardless of where said somewhere services resided in the city, what was the stuff though, right?
Without the assessment of additional use related to that.
I think that finds it out.
The sewer, does it, it's silent on the water.
And I, that's where I was kind of going next, sorry. So on, on sewer, I'll, I think we're going to need to talk through this, but I would throw out, I think we need to honor those sewer and figure out how to adjust the credit to that amount.
Well, that is, and that is the reason we look at one sewer, one water, because then it's.
Going to take care of something now and not buying a future, not buying a future council, not limiting Mr. Horrocks, you know, like the mayor said, if things should increase and we have a dollar figure here, then, you know, we're trying to come down as even as possible and as equitable as we can, we can come up with, also, knowing what he was looking at now to accomplish.
In the same sense, the property value went up since then and the loss of that property in the same sense, that, you know, your water taps are going up, your sewer taps, the same way the property values are going to lose out on.
So is that an agreement, is that something you're, you're okay with to substitute that, to get that water connection?
I won't, I won't do, I ain't going to trade all those tabs in that, in that crossing that creek for that, that's, that's not mine for me, that'd be, that'd be like giving up 20 acres for, for a mile acre track, it's. It's, I don't know if any guys would do that, would anybody do that, to whose value?
What's the value of the water tap? Twenty-five hundred feet for the sewer was ninety-eight. It's a little dollar amount, just on these, and again, the money, there's another one, as well as the other property. We got the water, the water is about to. Twenty thousand eight hundred dollars is what the dollar amount is. But again, in order to have a settlement agreement, we have to say what, we just say, here's three water and sewer taps. So he gets nothing, there's no settlement. Well, that's, that's where I was gonna go, I, I think the sewers pretty strict for waters where I'm kind of trying to understand and how to address that.
What we people do is just make up a rule of law that we have to follow. Give you a tabs and, and the three and everything come across the, come across the creek like it was, it was talked about back then, that it did get done. Across that creek to a hundred and twenty-five feet on that. This, this will be agreed upon in the first place.
So hey, Jack, correctly, my, my easement is isolated, right?
Yeah, it's the legal description is isolated.
So, that's the other, is if you create easements, it's isolated, it's a certain amount of footage on either side of that pipe, should I waste fifteen foot on either side of that pipe?
I'm not sure, the width of it, yeah, it's either ten or fifteen on either side of the pipe and that's isolated.
And that's the legal description that's what they're coming.
Island by the drawing.
Island, is what the legal says. They don't say as drawn as planned, it says as laid. Read it over and over again, spent a lot of time doing that.
And there's something that they agree about water taps, right?
Yeah.
Just sewer.
No, there's good water too.
Not easement, that's not in the easement language. There was not, and that, that's what started the discussion is, when you met with staff and you came to me for that interpretation. And we said, all right, we understand him on the sewer side, water side now.
It, it stays right at the bottom of the, in it, there's water tap also.
It's, um, it isn't, um, one of them, I think we're talking.
It was five.
It was not one of us.
In consideration of granted severance, the grantor should be allowed to make free residential connections to the city water system without the assessment of any damage.
And that was the one that was or was not recorded.
Now, I think they're all reported, that that water did not make reference to property or otherwise, the sewers said, said sewer.
Said, said sewer, that's the designation of the discussion.
So, so I was just trying to, just trying to stay, we've got multiple meetings, analysis, the board's hand, recommendation.
Direction.
And currently there is nothing legally binding on sewers. I think it's, what's recorded, what's documented, I don't know. So what's recorded, there's no water, no, he's got some documents here. And I, I don't have a good topic, I'm just saying that, that currently, as it currently stands, there is no ordinance that says these fees can be credited, this is how we're gonna state it. We could have a settlement agreement as part of the package. They ask us to open that, or ask staff to go back and do a little research, or no action at all?
And that's, that's kind of where I was, admitting this settlement agreement to something that's reasonable for both parties and figure out what that is. Kind of feeling like we don't have all the information we need, which is the tough part.
I was gonna be ready to just file for it and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's.
Let's bring it forward, so. Number five, in consideration of granting of easement, grant, grantor shall be allowed to make free residential connections to city water systems without the assessment of any damages.
And the one where I, where I kept it there, they had the map on where was it supposed to go first, and then trade X amount, move it over. And, and he's got where that line was supposed to go across.
Also, pretty great, to try to summarize, you believe that between these two, you've got four connections, right? Four water, four sewer. And it's already been honored with current ownership, it's been honored with management, it's over, right? That would be, it's on the. What's that?
It's, it's on, it's on the.
And the only issue is, doing it in the form of settlement, settlement agreement, you know, there, there needs to be.
Well, the dollar number, how can you, today's dollar worth of credit, something we can't obviously, you know, it's gonna be in another ten years if he wants to do it then, I mean, we won't do it that fast, so it has to be today's dollars.
With three and three work? Three, three sewer, three water, I need that, I need that crossing back there to keep that, go off, this crossing here was done, this pile under Dr. O'Neil. And that, this is where Mike had it going before, a hundred and twenty-five feet across, right here, or right there. That was supposed to go a hundred and twenty-five feet past there, but didn't. Martin, you can put it that way up here, and Mike just dotted it on up through there, that's, that's pile under by the road cap.
Yeah, and then, I've, I've looked at this enough to be isolated, I, I think that's, that's, that's an issue that I don't think we can bind with future boards doing.
I'm asking that to be done now. That would be a, that, that is, or is actually crossing that now.
How that crossing moved?
No, they haven't put in. It was, it was never put in by, you, you know, it was asked in various times. And Mitch put it in, so.
What's the, the, what is the type of needed for that?
That's where Griner bump and go down the bottom and, and then probably.
We're talking a hundred feet of sewer pipe, or like a?
A hundred and twenty-five.
A hundred and twenty-five is a piece of sewer pipe, and you got two.
A hundred and twenty-five would be past the creek.
And then, and Jack, there are two in the pipeline.
No idea, depending on how long it is and where it sits in it, as it relates to the elevation.
What's our range of the Griner pump, or their station?
They have to be a very comprehensive individual, you can get a rough estimate based upon what is required, that'd be, but that'd be against.
So.
That if it's up here where you have it, it's gonna be less, or it's gonna be much smaller pump than a key pump below. Because you have two pounds per every foot of elevation, and it's unregretted.
So, I'm not a lawyer, but I've worked on a place along with you, so following on. If we grant you credits for three and three, how do you use those credits, it's kind of up to him, right?
The hardest part for us will be an accounting system in place so that we can know in thirty-five years, one of his credits is successful in interest, if he wants to use one.
So if you wanted to use those credits and take care of this.
Right, that's, I don't think that's, and Jack, it just.
If you want to make it simple and clean, we'd set a dollar amount, we write a check, and it'd be down. And that would be, he would weigh all of his claims here, the city would just pay, here's what it is. If we would have done that in this originally, nobody would have had a problem. That's why we paid for all the ones on the new sewer project. If we paid twenty sixteen thousand, we know what the dollar amounts were, we can get a rough estimate, if that's how you want to go, as to what this would be in the distance and square footage and based off of his square foot price. Calculated, and here you go, and writing the check, and then he'd have present value today, and if he never used it for sewer, it wouldn't matter, but when he comes for sewer, he writes in city of Jack. That way, we have permanent accounting of what he has done. If he wants three of it, he pays us fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars for three taps, because he already had paid them from us, in whatever amount he has over there. That's the cleanest way.
So that, how's that sound? I know it's not like, and we're, we're trying to clean up something.
I've had, I've had about this, see what, you know.
But we can.
How about this, how about, I, I moved to the right staff to work for a settlement agreement to provide the, the equivalence of three sewer, three water. Either in cash considerations or credits based on recommendation of staff and legal counsel?
I don't think I have credits, because even then, I'd carry with that required wire. Just, I think it's just clean, I think it's just clean as I was on the picture board, not how you do.
That's probably a little bit in case, you, you know, it's a way to go. You want to say over that dollar amount, or you want to look at what it costs to use it? Based on what we did with the, the.
Assuming we were going to do it today, we would do an evaluation of this property level, the distance, the amount of square footage, we were gonna do a permanent easement, I think, temporarily, unfortunately, they're gone. But we calculate what that delta figure is. That's what we would have been everything. That's what we, he's just getting today's dollars versus sixteen years ago dollars. So the increase in value of his property, which would include the access of subversion, all goes into the current amount, so he's gonna get a better deal than he would have got then, if it would have been done, been done the right way.
So ultimately, take it to.
Make a motion on the floor. So we, we'll calculate, there's a crossing, there's a creek, and other, other problems.
We have to calculate it all.
Check this a little bit. Now let's discuss.
Yeah, I'm good, let's do it.
Do you have a credit?
What I said, those cash, cash part of it.
Mine's the best option.
What I said, those cashes, right, so then whatever is the best way for whatever staff recommends, the correct brand, or the, and then bring it on, both, both parties are leaving it out. We'll leave it at what we're talking about, right, so we should, but knowing that, that I'm on the, on the data.
And that include the possible, just kind of the danger of easement, materiality, which then, or do we need to?
How, how great ones to use the.
The credits would be based on the three and three?
Yeah. So would you go back to, you go back to only satisfy the agreement that he has, or the one that's also over that property?
I think it's gotta be everything in order to, so that there's, there's a settlement agreement.
All our things are brought forward, and just clean them off.
So this same thing would happen, would have happened with Bobby White, she has since her to the past and later. Because she still has one, she's got an outstanding one right now for that piece of property also. Her's not here anymore.
I think we've gotta take that as same change.
She's been to the research, been to the home room, do all those things.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so all those in favor of having staff, the city force, help us settle a grievance, say, I?
Aye.
I'll post a no. Next, item number six, discussion of the city manager purchasing authority level.
Anything?
No, so, we've all seen kind of the over purchase purchase. Current city manager purchasing level is ten hundred. So we just want to discuss if that number still makes sense, with the current cost of, you think as mine is a water break, or? The pipe that they're running place, is that something we want to look at, increasing with two, a different number? So if something comes in, that means you buy this equipment, and there's immediately a way for a, it's an ordinary purchase.
So, I had brought this up earlier this year, when we were working on the, the website. Where the mayor at the time, the city guy, I don't know how it worked out, but they, they went and, and kind of purchased software on it, connected to the website that they were asking us to approve a bid for, right? So, you know, essentially, I, I felt that was, you know, made illegal, right? Based on a personal policy, but I thought that was pretty unethical to try to, you know, purchase that from that company when we're in that activity process.
Okay, why, that's good, that's all.
Yeah, and they, they came in to the presentation, and they're like, oh, yeah, by the way, thank you, we're, you know, we've got a new customer, you know, so it kind of made, it seemed like, maybe that's in the area. So, you know, I, I'm in favor of, of paying it if we do, but I would like to add something to it where something like that is prevented from happening again.
And one of the things there, you know, most of those agencies, it's all like the bottom module, anytime there's a contact, it still needs to work with you, whether it's four thousand, whether it's hundred and forty, they don't stop.
Except in all that.
So that's, that's one of the things that is outlined in that.
And if we want to look at increasing the purchase level for, or utility related, or utility issues.
And that's absolutely possible, I think that's where we really, it's the most, I guess my biggest concern is, I feel like I'm not constantly, but a number of times, you know, it really kind of emerges after about once a month, there's an emergency purchase that comes up, and, you know, it come up right after the meeting, or, or, you know, we want to be able to get the work done. And, you know, creating those emergency situations at work, it just is, you know, it feels like a difficult situation.
So it has worked, right?
It has worked, absolutely, we can say, yeah, we just run forward for discussion. This is the procedure, if this is something that's so comfortable for us, we can, we can move forward with it. Let's, this is just bring forward an option.
Yeah, I mean, like, so in order for me, like, to support something that outlasts, I mean, include something, some language in there that would prevent staff from, from purchasing a, a module or something in relation to that activity process. That I just don't want, I just don't want any kind of conflict of interest, or, I mean, anybody that keeps the city, it's something changing.
That model be something extra, I don't know, that went down? So that module or pieces proposed to be something decent to have, or something to replace what we currently got?
What, what it was, was they wanted us to go with this website company, and they purchased a module with that company for the website, right? Yeah, so.
Right, right, right. Emergency purchase is something we need to.
Many of them, but it was in the spending authorities that were out there.
How long did you have? So they, that may be, that policy. That's only here. We just amended it.
To go up from, from what?
Five, I think. And that's kind of where I'm at, is, is how many of our benefits are, and where I am is a more official law, I, I think we're trying to find a solution to problems that exist.
I think we're trying to find a solution to problems that exist, or, you know, the, these emergency purchases have them in the way.
And so long as, um, you all are okay with any situations like that, the information I'm providing, continuing communications. Pardon? Okay, great.
And I would echo what Jack was saying, that, you know, especially with the dangers happening apart, or then they have accountable, that is, I think send a little wrong message as well, so I'd like to keep it where it's at, if possible.
Absolutely.
And as I kind of looked at the others, you know, part of what I looked at there was, you know, kind of percentage of their overall budgets. And if we're, I think we're in line with where we need to be, and knowing that occasionally we'll have those things, communicate, move forward.
And I was like, some of this, I mean, it's always going to be there, we're definitely not doing right now. I think we're in line with you, some of those, you know, everything. And I think the, the ultimate, the, the ultimate issue really is that in the utility department, emergency or government, a lot of the things that happen are costly. And so I think that's kind of the big piece there, it really is, you know, you saw, the whole list was emergency, or it was, was utility department. I don't know if I'd call it an emergency purchase, it needs to happen, it needs to happen now, so it is an emergency, um, and it, it costs, you know, we, we, if it's, there was something I contacted you all on, and also that, you know, we're in that amount, just to say, hey, you know, we're doing this, we have this, it kicked the bucket, and it's, or they need to have it stop. Okay, yes, that's, okay, good, that's the way we proceed then. Very good.